Trishelle Gleason, Assistant City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, July 14th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for July 14th, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sessions of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can go to GoToMeeting using the log links, phone number, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front of the agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate session. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. Attendance for this session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmember Farber. Councilmember Farber attending virtual.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Spring.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Jason Lehman.
Let's go back to Ms. Farber, please.
Ms. Farber, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. So we're going to do things a little bit different. It's not on the agenda, but I wanted to make sure that I give some time for public input. So thank you for joining us. If anybody does have public input, we would accept it now. I would like to keep it to 30 minutes, and I'd ask that everybody keep it five minutes or under, if you could, please, if you have anything to say. But as many people would like to speak in that time, feel free to come on up to the podium and just state your name and address for the record. And then after that, we will get into the action items. And just to quickly explain what you're going to hear tonight on the action item, there are basically two different things that are going to happen. It's a little different than a usual action item because we're in a different situation. But once Trish calls the action item, I'll entertain a motion. And the first motion you're likely going to hear is going to be to rescind the ordinance that was passed last week. And then after that, we would have to go through and be able to vote on that, but we would start discussion at that point. And then after that, we would go through and create a new ordinance based on any discussion that we have. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on what's going on because you're going to hear a bunch of motioning and seconding, and sometimes it's kind of unclear what's happening. So at this time, I would accept any public input that anyone would have.
I'm Delano Kane Watson, and I live at 994 Patricia Anne Drive in Ward 1 here in Dubuque. I'm speaking tonight not just as a resident, but as a current Commissioner on what was until recently the Equity and Human Rights Commission, and as a candidate for both Dubuque City Council Ward 1 and School Board this November election. Let me just start by thanking Councilmembers Rick Jones and Danny Spring for voting to retain gender identity protections from the beginning. Both of you are up for reelection and choose to prioritize people over politics, and that matters. And that shows leadership. That shows that you understand the weight of this moment and the people it impacts. But let me be clear: I'm here tonight because I am disappointed, concerned, and honestly frustrated. The removal of gender identity from our civil rights ordinance didn't just happen by accident. It happened because of a failure of process, communication, and accountability. As the sitting Commissioner, I tell you plainly, anytime civil rights protections are changed, anytime the structure and the function of our commission is being altered, there should be consultation with the commission. That didn't happen, and that's unacceptable. It's the city attorney's job to ensure that those consultations happen. That also didn't happen. It's the city manager's job to ensure major policy changes, especially those that impact vulnerable communities, are communicated clearly and ethically. That also didn't happen. And I want to be clear: I know everyone on this council personally. I've had conversations with many of you, and I don't believe any of you are trying to intentionally hurt people, but I also believe that good intentions don't undo harm. Had the public not caught this and not spoken out, gender identity protections would no longer be part of our code, and it would already be in effect, and that is deeply alarming. As a member of the LGBTQ community myself, and as someone who lives at the intersection of identities that are consistently questioned, erased, or dismissed, I'm telling you right here and right now that this was not just a mistake on paper. This is a painful reminder that unless we are in the room, our rights can be removed without notice. We talked about this at our recent commission meeting. We all agree that this should have never happened without consultation with us in the first place. And to our knowledge, no other city in Iowa has made this change, so again, I ask, why Dubuque and why us? The City of Dubuque says its mission is to deliver excellent municipal services that support urban livability and sustainable city plan, and to create an equitable community of choice. It says its vision is to be an inclusive and resilient city where all people feel welcomed and can thrive. And I'm here to say that this mistake wasn't equity, it wasn't inclusion, and it certainly wasn't resilience. This was a breakdown that should concern every single one of you as elected officials. We have to be extra careful when we're reading over and passing policy, especially when it involves people's civil rights, especially for people who look like me, who sound like me, and who live like me. And this raises a huge concern for me because if this was missed by not only the city manager and the city attorney, and by the mayor and several members on the council as well, what else is being passed without being fully read and fully understood? You are operating on a multimillion-dollar city budget. You are entrusted with the safety and the well-being of over 50,000 people, so please, let's let this be the last time something like this happens. So to everyone on the City Council, please recommit today not only to reinstate gender identity protections, but to repairing this process. Communicate with your commissions that you all appointed. Ask harder questions, and stand with the people even when it's not easy. To our city attorney, this happened on your watch as well, and this community expects better from your office. To City Manager Mike Van Milligan, you are responsible for making sure communications happens within our city structures, and that also didn't happen, and that trust needs to be rebuilt. And to the people of the City of Dubuque, this happened because you spoke up. Your voices, your posts, your presence made the difference. Never doubt your power. And to every voter listening, remember who stood up for you, who stayed silent, and who called their vote a mistake after the public pressure made it inconvenient not to. Your vote this November decides who keeps their seat and who gets replaced by someone ready to fight. So I want to thank you for your time, and I thank the City Clerk's Office for answering this into the official record.
Thank you, Delano, for your comments. Anyone else?
My name is Alexander Viner. I live at 12972 Swiss Valley Road with my dad, and I'm here to speak on the revocation and the reinstation of my protected status as a genderqueer individual. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Kavanaugh for catching this and for Sprank and Jones for voting no on the amendment. Let me tell you a bit about myself. I've lived in Dubuque since I was a year and a half old. I don't remember the first place my family called home, but I know why we left. Those people were cruel. They would destroy Christmas decorations and throw snakes on our deck. There wasn't a community there, just a lot of cruel people who decided we didn't deserve to live with them. Then my family moved here. They felt welcome enough to stay, so we did. I grew up here, and for all the times I've wandered around the city and gone, there's absolutely nothing to do here if I can't drink alcohol and go to a bar, I've had more thoughts about missing the rolling hills, the Mississippi, the charming restaurants and the streets, but most of all, the community here. I learned about gay people in sixth grade. Nobody taught me about them before, but as soon as I heard about it, I know that's who I was. My mom took it well when I came out to her in seventh grade. My dad took a bit longer to come around, but he figured it out. In the summer of my eighth-grade year, I talked with my counselor a lot, changing my name and gender. I couldn't have done it without their support, but let me share with you why this is important. Losing the status of being a protected individual affects a lot about my life. Had I not had that status, that support that I needed, that year could have gone a lot worse. And my eighth-grade year was the worst year I had ever had in my life. I tried to kill myself my eighth-grade year, and my brother stopped me. I spent a few days in the psych ward. There, I learned the beginnings of how to have a good mental health, but what could have happened if I didn't have that protected status? I can tell you, I probably wouldn't be standing here had one of those nurses decided I didn't deserve the same things as everybody else in that room. When I started in high school, I learned something interesting. People had 20 million other things to worry about than what was in my pants. The only ones who ever cared were the ones who were cruel. I dreaded going to homeroom every week because that's where they were. I remember having to listen to one of my classmates talk about how she had gotten her coworker's fired. He was trans. She had reported him harassing her so many times, he got fired over it. She was laughing with her friends about it. I remember hearing one of them say that that'll teach those freaks. We were seniors. The teacher was there, and he didn't say a single word. I never went back to homeroom after that. When I graduated, I was so excited. I had gotten a full-time job at one of the local manufacturing plants, and I had gotten fired in six months when I called out after the first day of the week because I had COVID. I didn't know that I'd have to call out every day I'd been gone, so I went to a restaurant. About four or five months in, I realized I wanted to do something or make something, so I started volunteering down at the blacksmith shop in Galena. I know Weird, right, who in the past 100 years has wanted to be a blacksmith? Two weeks later, somebody totaled my car. They lied about having insurance, and I went absolutely stir-crazy for three months until the driver's mother reached out and gave me the money for a new one. I didn't make a great decision on a vehicle, but she drives. But if I didn't have those gender identity protections when I registered my car, what could have happened? I could have been told that I wasn't welcome here, that they wouldn't help me? That's a terrifying thought. Can you imagine going to get your registration done and being told to get lost? You have to have registration to drive a car. Say I wasn't able to get my registration before it expired and a cop pulled me over. They do their job like it's their job, but then they take a look at my ID. That gender identity marker could be wrong, incorrect in this police officer's eyes, so they asked me to step out of the vehicle. Without gender identity protections, that cop could do a million things, could do a million different things to me, and I couldn't do a single thing about it. You know what the worst part is? People don't realize that these things protect all of us. Without gender identity protections, you could get pulled over, any one of you. A cop could pull you over, tell you one of your taillights is out, take a look at your license, and decide he didn't believe you. And when you get to jail and you finally talk to your lawyer, they tell you there's nothing they can do about it. You could be on vacation with your family, decide you need a passport, and when you go to the DMV, they tell you they don't serve your kind here. You could go to a restaurant, and someone could lock you in the bathroom until someone got there who could check what was in your pants. That's horrifying. Some people who are here think that I deserve this, some people who are listening, but I'm not the only one who will suffer if these protections are lost. So for myself, but also for every member of our community, I urge you to support this vote and support gender identity protections. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexander, for your comments. Any others this evening?
My name is Jake Kerzik, and I live at 1110 Victoria, Ward 1. The views I express tonight are my own, not that of my employer, nor my role on the Human Rights Commission. I'm sorry I made a mistake. That's not something you often hear today. In fact, I can't recall the last time I remember a politician actually admitting fault. I hear a lot of denial, gaslighting, deflecting, and zero accountability. Why is that? Are politicians actually perfect? Are they infallible and capable of error? Or do politicians have a need to protect their ego and inability to be perceived as weak, fear of consequences of their actions? In the face of scrutiny from the public, the media, or their opponents, admitting wrong might mean the loss of donations, political capital, or ultimately, elections. So in light of the paucity of admitting fault, I want to first acknowledge Councilmembers Jones and Sprank for their initial no votes. I'm not a mind reader, so I'm not sure if you're voting no because you recognize the broader changes in the ordinance, or if you, like me, disagree with misguided recent laws of the state of Iowa, House File 856, Senate File 311, or Senate File 418 that attempt to undo equity and inclusion work, but I support your no vote either way. Subsequently, Mayor Kavanaugh and City Manager Mike Van Milligan, I really appreciate you admitting your errors, but not just saying something, but taking responsibility and action to actually rectify a mistake and avoid it in the future. Again, politicians may talk, but to actually take action seems rare. In particular, as a Commissioner for Human Rights, I appreciate the possible investigation into changes to policy, to change how city ordinances take place. I admit to initial feelings of rage and disgust last Tuesday while preparing for the Human Rights Commission meeting that night, as I looked through the documents, notes, and video recording of the council meeting last week and the hours before the meeting. I worked to recreate a red-line document to understand what changes had actually been agreed to that we, as a commission, had just updated just months ago. So I encourage the council to think about these internal policies to avoid errors like this in the future. Maybe that involves relying or incorporating these voluntary boards and commissions, since we, as a commission, had no knowledge of these changes beyond being told that the department was changing names. But it could also mean slowing down proceedings when substantial changes are being made to city code. So again, thanks to admitting your wrongs and reworking to right them. That doesn't necessarily excuse that we can't still be disappointed that we find ourselves here today. What brought us here in the first place, this mistake of removing protections within our city for gender identity? What about the world our state or our city has put our fellow citizens at risk and under attack? Why would a state government attack their own citizens, remove their rights, and write poor and unclear legislation that threatens municipalities and caused lawyers for those municipalities to be overly cautious in their interpretation to avoid fruitless attacks from our state government against our city? Based on recent actions to our state and federal government, I admit I might be wrong myself in thinking how I understand the government should work. That is to provide common good and protect the rights and freedoms of its citizens. That means all people should have protections to individual liberties, and adjust an equitable society that our government, whether local, state, or federal, should safeguard fundamental rights and provide essential public goods, services that include infrastructure, education, healthcare, among with the goal to improve overall well-being of society. Lastly, it's my understanding that the governments should work to ensure justice and fairness, including equal access to justice in protecting vulnerable populations rather than trying to scapegoat them. But you're probably correct to think I'm wrong and confused based on the actions of the state of Iowa and our current federal governments. They would rather have me believe that the purpose of government is to serve capital hoarders and to facilitate the transfer of our work to the greediest among us. Instead of providing a dignified and fulfilling minimum standard of life, they envision no community, no togetherness, only you, only your fault, or the fault of your neighbors around you. They want you to believe that any problems you have, the inability to afford to live, the inability to overcome misfortune, or the attempt to improve your station, are not caused by their government refusing to do their job, as I understand it. Instead, they want you to blame your neighbor, the immigrant who believed the claim that lives could be improved by the United States or by the trans person living unabashedly their true and authentic life. Despite the best efforts of the Iowa Legislature and the United States government to divide us and to abdicate their responsibility to protect everyone and improve our well-being, it is our responsibility as citizens to call out the wrongs that we see in our government, and for all of us to admit our mistakes and then work to fix them and to protect human rights, which means that rights for all, including trans rights are human rights, and we should be reminded, as the UN stated a few years ago, intolerance, bigotry, racism by politicians and leaders to secure or maintain popular support renders those individuals complicit in the violence that follows. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake, for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, City Council, City Staff. And my name is Dave Hyer. I live at 805 Carriage Hill Drive, and I also serve on the Equity and Human Rights Commission, soon to be the Human Rights Commission. I am not going to repeat or reiterate some of the things that you've already heard from other commissioners, although I endorse their comments, but I do want to acknowledge, you know, having served in city government for 44 years, I realize that sometimes mistakes are made along the way, and I appreciate that you have recognized that what happened last week could have been a mistake and that you're at least reconsidering that action and taking another look at that this evening. But I do want to reiterate, and I think it's been said a couple times this evening, but the code, the current code, and the revised code, under the powers, duties, and responsibilities for the Human Rights Commission, indicate that we are to make recommendations to the council regarding human rights, and I would encourage in the future that that process would be followed so that we can avoid situations like this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, for your comments.
For the tall person in the room. Hello, I'm Nina Urbey. I live on 180 West 15th Street, and I'm just going to say, well, first, thank you to Rick Jones and Danny Spring for voting no initially because I felt like that was the right thing to do, and it shows a testament of character, I think. But that being said, what we cannot do tonight is come away thinking that what happened last week was a mistake. It's not. It's a catastrophe, in fact, because this isn't just about the degradation of our human rights for the transgender comrades and community that have been so vocal in showing up for what they believe is right, and for us, that is right. It's a damage to the credibility of our city government that we've allowed ourselves to get to this point. We hear so much about how Congress is always passing bills that they never read, or they just don't never have the time to read, and they pass the bills anyway. Well, this happened in our city government. Somebody along the line gave us an ordinance that people didn't read, and it got passed, and now we're here. And I think that's inexcusable. And why it's inexcusable isn't just the fact that this happened without due process, because what this shows is that we are seeing every single day that the fascists and the hateful bigots that exist in this country will never stop. They exist every second of every day, trying to roll back the hard-earned rights and protections that people in this country who are otherized, they need these protections, they need these rights, because otherwise, people will suffer, people will get injured, people will die because of these. And for someone, I'm a gay man, and maybe because of my T-shirt, you would already know that, but for people who don't actively project an otherized identity, they may be spared the most cruel effects of what happens when our rights get bypassed, but that's not the case because we have seen that whenever rights get rolled back, it never stops at one community, because today, it might be the transgender community, tomorrow, it may be the rest of the LGBT community, it may be immigrants, it may be the Muslim community, it may be any other community that this country has otherized because they don't think that we have a place to exist here. Let me be clear: we do. We exist here, and we deserve to be here. So moving forward, we cannot excuse this as a whoops-a-daisy. There needs to be accountability to make sure that this doesn't happen again. Whether it's a new policy put in place to make sure that every word of every ordinance that gets put before the council gets read, or simply someone getting the sack, there has to be accountability moving forward, and trust needs to be restored. You know it, I know it, and to pretend otherwise is disingenuous. So for the sake of not only the transgender community and the rest of the citizens of Dubuque, but for your own credibility and for your own sake, please make sure that not only is this rectified, but this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina, for your comments. We've got a little over five minutes left, if we have any other comments this evening.
Hi, Haley Lammerhine-Dowell, 1145 Mount Pleasant Street. This past fall, I teach, well, I have been teaching at Dubuque Senior High School, but this past fall, my students and I read "You've Got to Have Hope" by Harvey Milk. And if you're not familiar with Harvey Milk, he was a Commissioner in San Francisco who was assassinated in the 1970s, which was news to my students because unfortunately, we don't teach a lot of LGBTQ history in our schools. My students and I went and looked at the history of the City of Dubuque to see what our own history was on the commission, and I shared with them the story that I was 17 in 1999 when there were no protections for LGBTQ community members, which sounds like ancient history to them, but was not to me. I still remember being in a science classroom at senior high school as a student and having the teacher tell a student that he was disgusted because her mother was a lesbian. And there was nothing that we could do legally. I know, because I called the mom to inform her what was said during class about her. I went to the principal, and the best they could do was have me fill out a sexual harassment form, because there were no forms for that particular type of discrimination. In 1999, I protested in front of the public library with guidance counselors and the members of the Gay Straight Alliance at senior high school. It was a time when they were putting forth, trying to get the protections added to the City Council, and then Mayor Duggan was adamantly opposed to those protections. But I remember after the meetings when we would protest, and at the very, very hard meeting where they voted against the protections in 1999, Ann Makowski stood at the window of the public library and waved at us, and she acknowledged, like Mr. Spring and Mr. Jones, that there were people there that supported us. I think it's really important to remind you that when you're protecting vulnerable communities, you're serving in 2025, but you are serving for a city that has a pretty shady history in terms of not protecting the rights of vulnerable communities. As a teacher, I remind my students constantly about the importance of slowing down, slowing down your work. We look at grammar, because kids think grammar doesn't matter, right? A lot of people are like, well, grammar's old-school. And I said, you're going to read legal documents where a semicolon's going to make a difference in your life. So when you're looking at documents and saying, and we do in school, and we say, what's different? What's missing? Why is that missing? What does that change? How is that going to affect or impact things? So as you, I left the community, I lived in Iowa City to teach after college. I returned in 2007, by then, I think it was like 2005, that they had passed the ordinance. And it was a good feeling to know that I was returning to a community that had put in place protections for, that brought us up at that point to like where everyone else in the country was. But I, again, want to think about the people that can't be here tonight because they are from vulnerable communities, and when decisions like this are being made, I would hope that you're taking the time to have meetings with those people that might not feel safe to come before you and share their experiences. So very brave people that have came forward, and it's expecting a lot of people, and having this mistake that was made forced people out into the community publicly in a way that, currently in a community where they're not protected. So I think that needs to be there. I encourage you tonight when you vote, I hope you vote the right way, but that you say why. Let's get on record. Let's proudly and loudly oppose bigotry and say why it is that you're voting to protect, not just a yes, I'm voting. Why are you voting to protect? And if you're voting no, feel free to say, but we can also fill that in for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley, for your comments. All right. I'll do a last call here.
My name is Patricia Mackey. I live at 1353 Atlantic Street. I'm a 10-year resident of Dubuque, and while I might not have been born here, and I'm still a pretty lousy Uker player, I am proud to call myself a Dubuqueer. I'm here tonight to express my support for the continued inclusion of gender identity as protected class in the Dubuque Human Rights Ordinance. I'm speaking up, although there are obviously plenty of people who are a lot closer to this issue than me, people who are a lot more impassioned and have more personal and political things to say about the importance of this language, but I wish to bring up a slightly less passionate, but maybe also pretty important point. At this moment in time, Dubuque has a reputation for welcoming people who rely upon the protections of the Human Rights Ordinance, those who rely upon its provisions for gender identity. of the Human Rights Ordinance, those who rely upon its provisions for gender identity in particular. While it might be, or whether it be through social sites, friends, or professional networks, prospective Dubuqueers often ask how safe or welcoming our community is for trans, non-binary, and gender non-conforming residents. And you know what? Those LGBTQ residents who already live in Dubuque speak very highly of our city. By and large, we attest that this is a good place to live, work, and start a family. Why do we say those things? There's a lot of different reasons, but one of the bedrock reasons is this: We trust that anyone moving to our city will be able to access safe housing, fulfilling careers, and good education. If the city ceases to protect citizens on the basis of gender identity, it will not only worsen the lives of existing LGBTQ Dubuqueers, it will also repel new residents, new professionals, new business owners, new students, new families. Dubuque must continue to enshrine gender identity as a protected class in its Human Rights Ordinance. Our city must do so not only because it is the ethical thing to do and the compassionate thing to do, but because it is the developmentally prudent thing to do, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia, for your comments. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for speaking up who had the opportunity to do so. And we also just want to make sure that everyone knows, we did receive a lot of written feedback. So thank you very much for that, too, for everyone who was able to provide that, or to call us or stop us on the street, or any way that you were able to communicate with us. Thank you for doing so. At this point, we'll end public comments, so the rest of the comments will be from up here. And I'm going to turn it over to Tricia to call out her first action item, or only action item for the night, please.
Action item number one, Equity in Human Rights Ordinance Amendment.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I'm going to receive and file, excuse me, receive and file the documents and rescind ordinance number 29-25.
Second by Wethel.
I got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Mike, I'll let you read the memo at this point, I think, if that's all right with you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Brad Kavanaugh called this special city council meeting to further consider the Equity in Human Rights Ordinance Amendment. As city manager, it is my responsibility to review and research every recommendation that I send to city council and then to clearly explain the recommendation to city council so the city council can have a thorough debate of any issues and then make a final decision. In the case of the changes to the Equity in Human Rights Ordinance at the July 7th city council meeting, I failed in that obligation. I cannot argue with any of the public input that was received tonight as it pertains to me. I should have done better. When the city council passed the ordinance on July 7th, they voted to remove, and I quote, "gender identity," a gender-related identity of a person regardless of the person's assigned birth, close quotes. There are other places in the ordinance where the reference to gender identity was removed. The city council also changed the language for commission membership in section 8.2.5 from the previous language. The commission comprises nine residents of the city appointed by city council from various racial, religious, cultural, and social groups within the city, close quotes. It was changed to this new language, and I quote, "The commission comprises nine residents of the city appointed by city council from various sectors of the community, including those protected from discrimination under this ordinance," close quotes. I should have pointed out these changes to city council in the cover memo, and I should have provided a redline version of the ordinance so that the city council could have identified the changes. Another issue is the fact that I should have reviewed the ordinance changes with the Human Rights Commission prior to bringing it to city council. While I believe gender identity was deleted from the ordinance based on concerns about eligibility for federal funding, there does not appear to be any federal or state requirements that require the language to be removed. The following is what caused the concerns about federal funding. Presidential Executive Order 15168, which was signed on January 20th, 2025, it changes, and I quote, "the policy of the United States to recognize two sexes, male and female," close quote. Then it contains this prohibition, and I quote, "Federal funds shall not be used to promote gender ideology. Each agency shall assess grant conditions and grantee preferences and ensure grant funds do not promote gender ideology," close quotes. Then there was Iowa Senate File 418, Gender Identity, signed by Governor Reynolds on February 28th, 2025, with an effective date of July 1st, 2025. Much of the language in that Iowa law that was passed and signed by the governor is similar to the presidential order that I just mentioned, 14168. Then a letter from United States Secretary of Transportation Sean Duffy dated April 24th, 2025, and I quote, "Recipients are also precluded from allocating money received under DOT awards, such as through contracts or the provisions of other benefits based on suspect classifications. Any discriminatory actions in your policies, programs, and activities based on prohibited categories constitute a clear violation of federal law and the terms of your grant agreements," close quotes. Then there's Iowa House File 856, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, signed by the governor on May 27th, 2025, and it took effect immediately. And it includes prohibitions on efforts to promote or promulgate trainings, programming, or activities designed or implemented to encourage preferential treatment based on gender identity, among others. It included prohibitions on promoting, as the official position of the city, a policy, program, practice, activity, or procedure referencing gender identity, again, among others. The ordinance change passed on July 7th by the city council has not yet taken effect because that did not happen until the ordinance is published in a newspaper, and that has not occurred. Assistant City Attorney Jason Lehman advises, and I quote, "Even without the explicit inclusion of gender identity as a protected class, gender identity would still be protected under our ordinance pursuant to the Supreme Court's decision in Bostock versus Clayton County. The majority opinion written by Gorsuch held sex necessarily includes gender identity and sexual orientation." I respectfully recommend mayor and city council adoption of an amended Equity in Human Rights Ordinance, to change the title of the ordinance to Human Rights Ordinance, and to change the name of the commission to Human Rights Commission, reflecting only the changes we believe are required by state law. I further recommend that gender identity continue to be included in the Human Rights Ordinance, and the composition of the commission continues to reflect various racial, religion, culture, and social groups within the city. Other recommended miscellaneous changes includes 8-2-13G under powers, and it changes, and I quote, "advancing equity promotion inclusion to," I'm sorry, I close quotes, "to, I quote, the promotion and advancement of respect and belonging in the community," close quotes. And 8.2-13H, again, under powers, it changed equity to, and I quote, "respect and belonging," close quotes. It changed, quote, "cultural and intergroup," close quotes, to, quote, "community," close quotes. And then 8-5-2-F prohibitions, and there's just three minor grammar and punctuation changes, and these changes are also being recommended because we believe they're required by state law.
Thank you, Mike. Well, I'll kick us off here for the discussion, and I'm expecting we'll hear from other council members as well. I'm going to first by reiterating my apology that we're here at all. I'm sorry that this happened. I am, it has been, I don't think I've ever yelled as loud at Mike when I got the first phone call as what I did when I was driving in my car listening to this. I was shocked that this is what we had actually voted on. And I'll explain a little more about my shock in a second, but I just do want to apologize. I know that we caused pain, and I don't like to cause pain. It's not why I ran for anything. So I'm very sorry that that has happened to you and anybody that it has affected. I do want to take responsibility for my part in it. I tend to have some pretty high standards for myself. Anybody who knows me well enough, or maybe even a little bit, I tend to be, try to be a pretty high performer most of the time. And in this case, I completely failed at it. I mean, just completely fell flat on my face. And I think that our city actually works pretty hard to be a pretty high-performing organization and also fell on its face in this moment. I also think that I work with colleagues up here at this desk on the city council who are very high performers. I respect the people who are here, and I've watched them work, and they do great, great work. And I don't think that they, I will hear from, I'll let them speak for themselves, but I know that they expect themselves to be high performers as well. I'm really upset and disappointed that we're here. I haven't had too many things keep me up in this role. This one did a number of nights this past week. I just couldn't even believe that we did what we did. And it was, it was very disappointing to me, and I'm disappointed that we have to be here. And I want to have some very thorough conversation about that tonight. I do want to expect, or I do explain a little bit my perspective as we did get this vote because it did strike me that there was no conversation at all when we made this vote last week. And I don't want anybody to read too much into that. If you've been paying any attention at all to the conversations we've been having for the last six months, we've talked about the term equity in the Human Rights Office a lot. We've discussed it a lot. I think, if I'm not mistaken, I even said I thought it was dumb that we had to remove the word dumb, to remove the word equity from a Human Rights, the name Equity in Human Rights. Yet, when the time came to vote on it, I had explained my position pretty thoroughly in this room and discussed quite a few reasons why calling it the Human Rights Department sounded fine to me if we were going to keep on doing the same stuff that we were doing before. And that's what I fully expected from this. When I read the memo and knew that the purpose of this discussion and knew that this had been coming for some time, it didn't occur to me, frankly, to recognize that something completely had been cut from the ordinance, that we had removed gender identity as a protected class from this ordinance. Honestly, it didn't occur to me to look for that and recognize it. Did do a read-through of the ordinance, clearly not as carefully as I needed to, and clearly not in comparison to an old ordinance. So I need to take responsibility for that as well. But one of the things that I want to talk about tonight is the fact that in the past, when we've changed ordinances in this room, we've done so with some pretty thorough information from our, from our city staff. And we've received a memo that said this is what we're doing. And I've trusted those memos to be accurate and to be complete. And this one wasn't, and it didn't include the fact that we had, that we had actually, that we were looking at something that was much more, that was much bigger. And the fact that we had this vote, in my opinion, and did this is, is a huge mistake. I think the biggest mistake that I've witnessed since I've been sitting here. And it's something that I agree with those of you that said can never happen again. Before we leave tonight, we need to thoroughly discuss the process to make sure that this doesn't occur anymore, no matter what the ordinance is. And I have a few ideas on that, but I'll hold on those until we have some more time to discuss with other council members. This is, to my recollection, the first time this has happened. I don't think that we have seen something like this occur where we've had a really consequential chunk of language pulled from an ordinance that we then voted on and had to go back and fix in some way. So it just happened to be this one. And that really does tear me up. I got to be honest with you, that it was this one. So I am looking forward to hearing from my council colleagues and hearing what thoughts are there. I'm also looking forward to coming up with a process. But before, before I open it up to the floor, Mike, I want to come back to you because I just, I want to, I want to begin with an explanation of what went wrong here. I mean, what, you know, from your perspective as a city manager, what did we do in a way that needed to change before it got to us to have this vote? And would just be very appreciative of hearing your, your comments on that.
Well, I'd suggest the biggest part of this process that was missed was the interaction with the Human Rights Commission. Because then everybody would have been fully informed with what was in here, what, what was being suggested to be changed, and there could have been a thorough debate of whether that was a good idea or not. So I apologize to the Human Rights Commission for that, and I understand why you were here expressing your concerns. And I, so as you say, you're going to talk about process improvements coming up, so I won't, I won't get into that part. But then the fact that, well, I think there was a lot of well intention in this process about the worry about our ability, as I pointed out in the memo, to access future, future federal funds based on messages we're getting from the President of the United States, the Department of Transportation, and our own state government. In fact, the changes weren't required. And my lack of engagement and understanding caused it to fit, get onto your agenda without a thorough explanation.
All right. Thank you, Mike. We'll leave it at that for now, and then we'll, we'll have some more discussion as we go around the table here. But I'll open it up to my colleagues to, yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I have a question for the Assistant City Attorney. I mean, one, two, three, there are six times in the, the ordinance that I'm looking at that there's a listing of, that's, that doesn't say gender identity. I have a list here, and it says, can, not, we will not discriminate against any person because of race, creed, color, sex, age, national origin, religion, or sexual orientation in the furnishings of, et cetera. And we're not going to put gender identity in there?
I believe that that is the ordinance that will be before you tonight because gender identity was not included in the ordinance from last week, Monday. But the ordinance that you will be considering a little bit later has gender identity protections in it.
So that's the, that's the original, the red line. And then where in these attachments, can I find the one we're enacting? Because we have several. It says a clean title, Title 8 Clean.
It would be Title 8 Clean.
So this is.
That's just show no red line. If you look at Title 8 Red Line.
Right. So this is the new one that we're talking about tonight. I just want to make sure that we have those, obviously, in here. So if you could tell me perhaps, let's see, 832, 822, I just want to make sure that we have these in, and how is it listed now? Are they individually listed? Or are they grouped in any way? Or how is it stated in the?
Gender identity has been added back every place that it was prior to last Monday night. So you're going to see it in various sections with employment, housing.
I see it now, 832, Section 1. And it is race, creed, color, sex, age, national origin, religion, sexual orientation, or gender identity in the furnishings of, et cetera. And so that's been made sure to be put in every single occasion, right?
Every place where it was previously, yes.
Right. And it was checked over, very good. Because I thought, wait a minute. Okay, so that was the old one. The new one is updated and is complete. All right. That's, that was my question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones.
I'm getting some credit tonight for voting no, and I have to confess, my no vote was related to my disappointment in state government for making us make changes that hearted my heart to make. I did not see the removal. I read the new ordinance. I didn't compare it to the old ordinance. It didn't snag in my brain. In my own defense, when I ran in 2005 for council for the first time, that was the issue. Our Human Rights Commission had recommended to this council five or six times that sexual identity be included in the protected classes, and the council had voted down time and time and time again. And the new guard of Mayor Roy Buehl, myself, Carla Bragg, and Kevin Lynch shifted the majority. In our very first council meeting, we made that change. And I was, I was proud of that. It's one of my proudest moments in the city council. I am sorry. I did not protect you. I got this wrong. I voted right, but that's, truly, it's a technicality. I voted right because of, I thought it's going to pass, everything's going to be fine. I thought it needed to be passed. We've been talking about how we need to make some changes in the Equity in Human Rights Ordinance. Frankly, my hope that night was that it would kind of quietly pass and not become a, not become a, a community issue that, that people were mad about. Well, we missed the boat there. Chris Gray found it and brought it to our attention, to a number of our attention. Thank God for independent news reporting in the community. Tremendously important and proven right here in this case. I'm disappointed in our backstops. The city manager backstops the city council, the city staff backstops the city manager. And the system failed us, and then we failed you. And that's just, just not how it's supposed to And that's just not how it's supposed to work, and I don't think it's how we're going to let it work anymore. That said, 32 years ago when Mike Van Villigan came on board as city manager, I don't believe that there has ever been a factually inaccurate document handed to the city council. There may have been date and time corrections and, you know, typos fixed by later ordinance amendment, but nothing substantive. There are two paths that a political can take when they discover an error like this. The popular one right now in America is to lie and deny. Well, the mayor didn't choose that, nor did the city manager the following day. The other path is to get up off the mat and get back in the fight and fix your error. I could never be as eloquent as the speakers tonight. You told your stories so very well. You put us in our place correctly and appropriately. But our place is to make the fix. This shouldn't have happened. Technically, it didn't because as soon as the mistake was discovered, the manager pulled the publication so that the changes would not take effect. They never did take effect. The protections never left you. That doesn't excuse what happened here. But it, I guess it puts me in a place where I want to fix this. I want to make sure that our Human Rights Commission is involved in every conversation about human rights that comes to this table before it comes to us. Lord knows, we rely on all of our commissions to help us get it right. And we'd do much better at it because good people like yourselves are there, paying attention to the details. The volume of stuff that comes to us as council members, it's enormous. So, it makes it all the more important that it's right. And this time, it just wasn't quite. But I bet when we leave here tonight, it's fixed. I don't know if it'll be better. We've got to continue to work in the right direction, to continue to earn your trust and to continue to give you the protections that you deserve living in a community. I can't begin to tell you how disappointed I am in the path that our federal government, state government is on right now in the areas of human rights. And in the areas of restricting this body and bodies like it across the country from doing their jobs for the people that elected them to do them. I also understand that we can't do anything if we're operating outside the law. And unpopular, some of the laws coming down are, my choice is to obey them or resign. And that was Mike's, too, as he pointed out to us a while ago at an employee gathering. So, I'm going to vote to rescind this mistaken ordinance. I'm certainly going to vote to fix it and put a better ordinance in. And once again, I'm personally, professionally embarrassed, and I apologize that we weren't quite good enough to face this issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Russell.
Thank you. I have a few notes that I wrote down so I would make sure that I shared my thoughts with you. I take my role as a council member very seriously. Along with reading all the material for the meeting, I also take note of who sent it to us, who made the recommendation to us, whether it be a commission, a department staff expert, the city attorney, or the city manager. Because none of us is an expert in every area, so we rely on those experts for guidance. And this time, the process had failed us. But when I'm reading through, I want to make sure that we're in compliance with state and federal laws. I want to work to bring the best outcomes for our community and our residents. I want to make sure this is a community where all are welcome and included, and everyone can thrive. And knowing that we have to follow those state and federal guidelines does sometimes tie our hands. So, when the ordinance was first presented, it appeared to only change the titles of people and commission as required. But now that we have that red line version of the ordinance and other resource materials which we didn't have before, we can see that there were also some unnecessary changes which we can repair tonight. I don't want to take away someone's human rights simply by placing a line through their existence on a document. We could be talking about you, or a friend, or a relative that you care about. It's important to remember that we are all human. Human rights pertain to all. And it's not like a pie. Human rights for others do not mean less for you. We want all our loved ones to be welcomed and included in the community and treated with respect. But being human also pertains to being city staff or elected officials. We sometimes make decisions, then later we have more information, and we realize we could have made a different choice. The important thing is to recognize when those things happen and make the changes when we can so they don't happen again. So, for the future, we want to make sure that we see all those red line versions of our ordinances up front so we can see the changes as part of our decision-making process. And listening to resident input, as we always do, is so important. And commission input is also an important part of the process. So, I look forward to our discussions on how we're going to change our process going forward. And I'm glad that we are taking this opportunity to change the things that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wethel.
To our transgender community, I am deeply sorry. There is a difference in changing a title of a department, job titles as required by state and federal law, and removing protections from a protected class. Transgender people are more than four times more likely than cisgender people to experience violent victimization, including rape, sexual assault, and aggravated or simple assault, according to a study by the Williams Institute at UCLA School of Law. In addition, households with a transgender person had higher rates of poverty victimization than cisgender households. The number of transgender people who were murdered in the U.S. nearly doubled between 2017 and 2021. According to the American Medical Association, or AMA, transgender individuals face a greater risk of violence, including being verbally harassed, physically assaulted, or sexually assaulted when accessing a restroom. Transgender individuals in the U.S. are up to three times more likely than the general population to report to be diagnosed with a mental health disorder, with as many as 41.5% reporting at least one diagnosis of mental health or substance use disorder. Over a third of transgender individuals suffer a major depressive episode in their lifetime. 20.2% have been diagnosed with suicidality in the past 30 days of their life. 7.9% have been diagnosed with an anxiety disorder in the past six months. I don't need to tell this to the people in this room because you care and you know this, but I want our community to understand the gravity of the situation. There is no question in my mind or my heart that transgender Dubuques should have protections of their human rights verified explicitly in our ordinance, now and always. I also want to apologize to our commission members, past and present, for the work that you have done and do. This should not have happened. I read my packet, front to back. In hindsight, I should have asked to make sure that the commission had reviewed the ordinance, as they did when amendments were previously made in November. This is an important discussion, and the commission should have been involved from the beginning. Moving forward, I will always ask for commission input in a situation like this, and I am grateful to our commissioners if there wasn't a... I want to state that if there was not a quorum for the commission to decide such an issue, then we should have waited. I am sorry. I take responsibility for that vote. And tonight, we're going to make it right, and we're going to reinstate these protections. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Farber, I know you're joining us remotely. I just want to make sure I give you a chance. Come here, Mr. Sprank. I know that Ms. Farber was in a situation where she was having to essentially play two roles at the same time here, and it was a difficult spot to be in. So, I'll wait to see if she's here another time. Mr. Sprank, I can come to you in the meantime.
Mr. Sprank. I had this lovely speech all written, and then I threw it out the window because...
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt, but Susan Farber did just send me a text. She said, "I am speaking." And then she says, "Can you hear me?" Obviously, we can't, so I don't know if there's somebody...
Felicia, we might need your assistance on this one. The great one behind the curtain, Felicia.
Mayor Kavanaugh, this is Randy. She appears to be unmuted, but we're not able to hear anything.
Okay. Maybe perhaps try calling back in, Ms. Farber. That might be the easiest way to do that, and we can come back to you here. We'll give you another shot. In the meantime, Mr. Sprank, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I had this nice speech all written, you know, but yeah, no. The one I voted, I have to be honest, when I voted, I voted that we were changing the ordinance to changing the name of the office. I didn't like that. I wanted to leave it the way it was. I had not read the entire ordinance in its entirety. I read the first two pages where it said we were just changing the name. I was like, oh, well, I don't agree with that.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Hey, Ms. Farber, we sure can, yep. So, we'll let Mr. Sprank finish his, and then we'll come back to you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
So, I'm very, I'm frustrated at myself mainly because, as a member of the community, this is a grave insult with all the things that are going on. And so, I will have to try to do much better. I'm hoping, moving forward, that we can make sure that we definitely get the input from our Human Rights Commission. And all the ordinances are redlined, so we know when there's changes. So, it's clearly visible to us as well as the public because I don't always have 40 to 50 pages printed out on both sides that I can lay out side by side and compare all the notes. So, I really want to make sure that in the future that we address that because that was just, yeah, it was more than a slap in the face. It was, it hurt. And it's going to take time for me as well as to regain, regain the trust in my community as well as every citizen because we shouldn't, we shouldn't have let it happen. But I'm glad that we're moving forward, and we're all going to, we're going to fix it. So, I'll be definitely voting to correct our error. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Ms. Farber, thanks for your patience. You can go ahead.
Yeah, and thank you. And my apologies for the miscommunication here on the mic. I also, number one, I just wanted to, with great appreciation, thank everybody that's at the Diaz here for your comments because I think they're very, from the heart, and I think it really much, it very much demonstrates how we all are approaching this in a very sincere fashion. And I just want to make a comment that although I am not of the gender identity concern here, that issue, I am a religious minority. And I have grown up in a situation here in Dubuque where, over decades and different generations within my family, this, our religious minority has not been the most welcome in Dubuque. And there still are, I do believe, significant prejudices against the Jewish community that exist even today. So, my apologies and how embarrassed I am that I didn't even pick up on this either and that, as my colleagues have said, that we didn't and I didn't recognize in the documentation that this was at issue. I just thought the naming and the renaming of the department and our employees was at issue and nothing further. So, I am deeply embarrassed that I didn't research it further. And I agree that the Human Rights Commission should have been informed, and we should have gotten feedback because it's so important to get the community's input on all of this. And I also agree that it's time to repair and fix the error and to really just have a just a general apology for this. And I'm concerned that we did not have the opportunity to even discuss it at our last city council meeting because that might have brought out further conversation for us. But again, I look forward to moving forward with this. And I do believe, as Mike had said, that we will still be in compliance with the federal and state guidelines, which I think was of utmost importance to us at our last meeting, and that, thanks to the legal counsel, that we understand that this gender identity is still protected as we speak. So, I look forward to moving forward. And again, you know, very embarrassed, very apologetic, and thank everyone that came forward tonight to share their thoughts and feelings with us. And again, based on what I've experienced in my life here in Dubuque as well, I totally understand how that feels to have prejudice against you and sometimes to have a target on your back. So, and I will be voting for the change. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Well, a couple of things, and then we'll get to the process discussion here. I think, you know, I hope that what people are hearing is what I've experienced in my role in working with this council is that we, we're serious about creating a community where all are welcome. We're serious about it. We've tried to do as much as we possibly can to move ourselves in that direction and move this community in that direction. I hope that despite this, people can continue to feel that way. I heard some comments that they're, that might be working, that people might be feeling more welcome. I really hope this doesn't set us back. We are sincerely working to do that, and we're going to continue to do it. And we're going to now continue to build, rebuild as much trust as we can with everyone who's been impacted by this and try to move forward in a direction of creating that community. Let's talk process a little bit, and then we'll go ahead and get to these votes. So, I'm hearing a few things. I mean, one thing that I know happens, and Mike, I'm kind of pointing this conversation in your direction. We have a staff review of, there's department staff that go through an ordinance and take a look at this and make sure that there are things that, you know, if something needs to change, that begins at the staff level. It then almost immediately moves to the city attorney's office to work through the legal issues of changing whatever wording needs to happen. Where we clearly fell down here is the next step of, well, actually, I would say one of the steps before this is redlining that version. We need to never, ever have ordinance in front of us again on the city council and for the public who gets the agenda that is not redlined. And shame on us for not doing that in the past. I think we've trusted our process too much and realized now that that was a grave mistake in this case and potentially led us into pitfalls in other places that maybe we didn't even recognize. And I think we need to make sure that we are clearly redlining things going forward. Then it gets us to the commission level. We have commissions for a reason, and I agree with the Human Rights Commission's members who are here tonight that this should have been before them, way before it was before us. And if it did need to be delayed to get to us, I think it should have been. And I think we should think about that for the other commissions that we have as well. There are some boards and commissions that don't work in quite the same way, but we know as a city the ones that do and that would need to be able to review these ordinances, and I think we should do that. Then it should go back to staff and the city attorney's office, make sure everything is ready to go before it's ever released to the public to come to us. I may have missed a few steps there, but that's kind of what I'm seeing as we talk about this process. Mike, I know you said you had some ideas on your end, too, and would be happy to hear what those are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think you basically covered it. The part that I would add to it is, so you only appoint three employees, the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk. And each of us have a defined role. And my role is to make recommendations to the city council. And when I do that, I have a responsibility to make sure you have the full understanding of what that recommendation is. And so, I think you covered some of the bases about how that should be accomplished. If it's a, involves where there's a city commission, the city commission ought to review it and be able to talk about it. And when it's brought to you, there should be a red line version. So, if for some reason I don't explain in my memo quite thoroughly enough, that you can look for yourself to see what's changing so you can make your own decisions. And then, of course, the fact that it thoroughly should be represented, the changes in the memo that I present to you. And so, I think the things that you've outlined there are the things that can help make the least amount of opportunity for anything like this to happen again.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, Ms. Russell.
One thing that someone mentioned, I don't remember who, I'm sorry. They mentioned opportunities for citizen input. Would that be at the commission level? Or I think we should build in some ways or reminders to citizens that, hey, this is coming up. If you're interested, concerned, have suggestions, contact commission or whatever. I think that would be a good... I think that would be a, a good addition.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. It's a great idea, yeah, to a reminder of where those places are, because there are multiple points along that spectrum where people can give input. Yeah, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I like everything I'm hearing here. I'd like to see it formally adopted by the city council by resolution in the future, once it's all thought through and penciled and papered and eyes dotted and teeth crossed.
That was actually on my mind, too. I'd like to, in that, in that light, I'd like to suggest that we, we actually see that before us at one of the next city council meetings. In, in light of the comment, I believe it was from Ms. Lammerhindel, the teacher, "Slow down and do it right. Make sure that we get it right before it does show up in front of us." But I do think it would be important for us to be able to adopt that as an action item sometime soon.
I learned that a long time ago with the fire equipment and procurement and things like that. I'd rather get it right than right now.
Yeah. Yeah, well said.
One that I had, that was even more brought to light as we heard feedback tonight. If there is a way within the ordinance to state that before future ordinance changes would be made, that there would be a recommendation stated within that request by the Human Rights Commission, so that no change in the future would be made by council without a recommendation from the Human Rights Commission.
Or in this case of what we're talking about, any commission related to reviewing that? Is that-
I think specifically related to the Human Rights Commission. As, to me, it's a very unique commission in its rules and goals, and its importance in, in people's rights. Just a thought, I'd be interested to know what my colleagues think.
Yeah. I'd definitely entertain that as a, as a possibility when that comes before us, for sure. So I'd appreciate that being a part of the discussion when this resolution comes before us, before, to adopt a process. Any others? Mr. Resnick or Mr. Sprank, any other comments before we move to a vote?
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
I was always, you know, human rights and civil rights are the most important thing we do here. And I don't know why we can't, we don't have a human rights and civil rights commission. I mean, so there's, I mean, they're not the same thing. I know they're related, but it's something we should consider. Human rights fundamental and inalienable, and then the civil rights are often defined by the nation laws and constitution. And I, I think human rights are civil rights and should be, and should be protected. So anyway, just, just some consideration towards that. I don't know why we would have a civil rights or human rights that isn't codified, right? They're both, human rights and civil rights, and we should make that a priority and maybe join them, just some, some, maybe we could put that before the commission and gather their thoughts about that. But anyway, I would like to stress the importance of both of those. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Mike, anything else from you?
No, I don't think so. I think between Jason and I that we've got the information we need to bring you a resolution at a future meeting to establish the process.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for, for the discussion, and thanks again to everyone who provided input. All right, we're going to move on to voting here. So our motion before us on the table is to receive and file and rescind ordinance number 2925. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Regarding the new ordinance, I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that opposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
I got a motion by Jones, second by Sprank this time. All right, we've had much discussion, which is very much related to what we're voting on here, but is there anything further before we take a vote? All right, motion here is to receive and file, waive the three readings on the new ordinance. The, and just to be clear, the one that is the new Title VIII, both listed as clean, and then there's a red line version there on the agenda as well. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. All right, thank you, everyone. Oh, thank you, yeah, right. We better, it was actually pass the ordinance. Geez, I almost screwed up again.
Have to come back next Monday.
Mr. Jones. Thank you. And Mr. Sprank, second, and I heard. All right, and this is for the final reading for the ordinance to actually take effect. Trish, would you call a roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Now, thank you to everyone very much for a great discussion. There's no further business before us tonight, so we are adjourned.